I believe it's six o'clock on July the 6th. I'd like to call to order the Cleveland County Commissioners. And Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
We do have a quorum.
All right. And I'd like to start off with a pledge and invocation at this time. Is there any person in the audience that would like to do that for us? Maybe a veteran, considering it's Fourth of July week?
I don't think we had to do that.
Thank you.
Shall we stand? Place the flag and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we stand today, the week of the Fourth of July, our Independence Day, in thankfulness, with thankful hearts, for those who have served our country. We thank you, Lord, for their dedication to the flag, to the country, to us as citizens of this country. We thank you for the freedom that they stood for and have given us. We pray, Lord, that you will lead us and this country where you want us and this country to go. We thank you for the leadership of Cleveland County and ask your blessings on them. Give them the wisdom and knowledge they need to lead us where you think we should be going. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. This time I'd like to recognize any elected officials we have with us tonight. Thank you for being here, Betsy. And veterans, especially this week, would you be recognized?
My head.
What branch of service?
Army.
Thank you very much.
I'm from the U.S. Army.
Thank you.
I'm from the U.S. Army.
Thank you all for your service. Law enforcement to be recognized tonight?
Danny Howe, Cleveland County Sheriff.
Thank you for your service, Danny. And I think we have some county department heads here tonight. If you would stand and be recognized and give us...
Tiffany Hansen, Health Department.
Alice Moody, Human Resources.
Chris Swan, Police.
Perry Davis, Emergency Management, Farm Office.
Owen May.
Sherry Ladd, Your Tax Office.
Thank you all for all you do for us. And back beside Sherry is Nicole Richard, who is our tax collector. And our county has reached a milestone. Can you tell us a little bit about that, Sherry? Or Nicole, maybe you can just tell us.
I'll let Nicole.
For the first time.
For the first time. The percentage that we have collected this year is 98.57% of the land.
We've never done that before. Thank you very much for your hard work and all the... Okay, Commissioners, are there any items that need to be added or deleted from the agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the proposed agenda as written.
Okay, have a motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Thank you very much. Now we're down to a special recognition. And for that, I'm going to turn this over to Commissioner Gordon to...
So Phil, can you read that first?
Yes, absolutely. Proclamation and recognition of Fire Chief of the Year, William Hunt. Whereas William Hunt is a veteran who proudly and honorably served in the United States Army and began his career in the fire service in 1988, serving as a firefighter and engineer from 1988 to 1994 in Thomasville; 1994 to 2007 as an engineer, captain, and battalion chief for Lexington; and is the fire chief for Shelby Fire since 2007, totaling 32 hours of fire service experience. And whereas William Hunt holds numerous professional certifications, such as a Level One Peer Assessor for the Center of Public Safety Excellence, is currently credentialed as a certified fire officer, North Carolina Level Three Code Enforcement Officer, has a graduate degree from the Grand Canyon University, an undergraduate degree from the University of North Carolina Charlotte. He is also a graduate of the National Fire Academy's Executive Fire Officer Program and is a past president of the Western North Carolina Association of Firefighters. And whereas, William Hunt spearheaded the fire and rescue department's accreditation initially obtained in 2014 and has successfully obtained re-accreditation status in 2019. Most recently, William Hunt was one of only a handful of the most highly skilled officers across the country to be included as part of the development team for the 10th Edition accreditation model. And now therefore, be it resolved, the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners commends Chief William Hunt for his years of service, numerous accomplishments, and congratulate him on the well-deserved honor as Fire Chief of the Year. Commissioners extend to Chief Hunt their appreciation for his continued commitment to serving the citizens of Cleveland County. Adopted this the 6th day of July, 2021.
Phil has already read this to you, so congratulations. Well deserved. There's your proclamation and we'll take a picture for a second. So for you guys to understand, so this is a very astute individual here. He's done a lot of work for the fire department here in Charlotte, Shelby, and also across the state. These... So let's speak to a couple highlights. For example, the accreditation that the department goes through is a peer assessment. So that's a high bar for any organization to do. So that is, the organization has been rated against law organizations from their peers to say, hey, you're capable of doing these best practices. One thing that you may have not have called in that, there's also an accreditation that we, as public safety officials, hold as well. William's been accredited. And that same process, that too, is a very robust process of where you're rated against your peers across the country. And peer assessors evaluate your resume and the contributions that you're given to, anywhere from your local jurisdiction to agencies that you've served with, like William served with the Western Firefighters Association. He served with the County Association here, and the firearms across the state. So he's done a lot over his career. It's an advantage for us to have him here in the county. And it's a great advantage for the city of Shelby to have him as our fire chief. This is well deserved. And we congratulate you on your work. And I hope you'll continue to do that, stay around for a while.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Did we get one picture right, please, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
We certainly thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And it looks like we have one person signed up for citizen's recognition tonight. The citizen recognition portion of the meeting is an opportunity for persons wishing to appear before the commission to do so. Each presentation will be limited to three minutes. The board is interested in hearing citizen concerns. Yet speakers should not expect comment, action, or deliberation on subject matter brought up during this segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate county agency. And Robert Williams has signed up. If you would come, state your name and your address.
Robert Williams, 814 East Hage Coast Trail, Sunfallston, Bethesda-Londale address. What I want to speak about, and I probably didn't put that on the list, but I've got a copy of your agenda in an email this morning about 10:00. Probably wasn't, not a lot of advance notice. But I've noticed that one of the items on your consent agenda is the DSS Advisory Board bylaws. And I looked through there and I found several things that concerned me. One was that it's going to be basically a bylaw requirement for a county commissioner to sit on the advisory board. My concern is, in your text of your bylaws, it says in one place that an advisory board member is to advocate for DSS clients and DSS programs, which essentially is saying that you're advocating for the DSS. In another place, it says that the county commissioners has full control over the DSS oversight. And my concern is, how can you advocate and provide oversight at the same time? That's a built-in conflict of interest. And I sent you an email too about that. And my recommendation is not to approve those bylaws. Take that out, that, you know, appoint somebody else besides a board member to have seat number one on the advisory board. And take out the members of the advisory board, the purpose is to advocate for the DSS. They're advising you on how to oversee the DSS. There's just missing links there, which has brought a couple lawsuits, several lawsuits, to you guys. So, you know, do what you please. My advice to you is, don't invite trouble. Oversee what you need to oversee. And if you need to advise anybody of anything, I'm looking at the clock too. You wish I'd shut up, I suppose. But also, that's the... Cleveland County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council is another suspect area. I can't see where any of these boards or advisory commissions have ever come. And I've come to many county commission meetings. I don't remember ever hearing one report from any of those advisory boards. So it must be happening somewhere in a vacuum in the dark.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to the consent agenda. And I'm going to call on Brian Epley, the county manager.
Thank you, Commissioner Bridges, members of the board. Several items for consideration this evening. So just bear with me as I work through the list. We'll begin with item A, which is from our Tax Administration Department. This is both the Tax Collector settlement for the fiscal year June 30, 2021, which is authorized via General Statute 105-373, as well as the order to collect for the upcoming fiscal year, which is further authorized by 105-321B. Both of these are normal reoccurring annual authorizations required by the Board of Commissioners for our tax department to operate in a normal way. Item B, you'll find your monthly managers' report. A couple of highlights from that report. We have successfully closed the previous fiscal year, June 30, and are now operating in the first week of our new fiscal year, obviously working through the audit process that goes along with that and all of the transactional requirements to get that well underway. Also pleased to report that we have received the first of two. And you'll see this momentarily, also in a budget amendment, of our allocation from the American Rescue Plan. All I would say is here is we're still working diligently on a better understanding of the Treasury's compliance guidance so that we can present a spending plan to the board commissioners. Also pleased to report off the managers' report that, and Commissioner Bridges outlined this at your last Commissioners' meeting, but we have received a formal copy of the Charlotte Business Journal, which identified Cleveland County as a top employer in the Charlotte region in the 500 to 1,500 number of employees as far as being a healthier place to work. And we're very pleased with that. Item C is from our Finance Department. And this is a request to add an additional online auction provider. Historically, since December 2003, the county has only participated with a company called GovDeals as a platform for auctioning surplus assets. And we're requesting to be able to add to that another platform called propertyroom.com. And we believe that that will give us some diversity and also reduce the amount of staff time required to dispose of some of those assets. Item D, from the Health Department, Budget Amendment Number 65. This is a request to budget grant dollars from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of $48,954. This will be used to offset existing salaries, so no new costs, and was used in a way that certainly met the criteria of the grant. Item E is the budget amendment that I mentioned previously, Budget Amendment Number 66, the first allocation of our American Rescue Plan funds. This is being set up. These funds are being set up in a special revenue fund outside of the county's general fund. The amount to be budgeted is $9,512,529. This Coronavirus Physical Recovery Act requires that we present this to the board and that you formally ratify it via this resolution so that we can receive those funds. Item F and the next few are from our Planning Department. All requests to set public hearings. The first one is a request to set a public hearing for Thursday, July 15, 2021. This is a petition to conditionally rezone parcel 52468 from residential to light industrial. And the intended conditional use is for meat processing. Item G, also a request to set a public hearing for July 15. This will be case 21-11 for parcel 59861. Again, to conditionally rezone that parcel from light industrial to residential. And the intended use here for this conditional rezoning would be to put 15 buildings with 360 multifamily units, again, in a residential purpose. But again, this request is simply to set that public hearing for July 15. Item H, also from the Planning Department, another request to set a public hearing. This public hearing request is set, being requested for August 3. It would be case number 2112. And the request is to rezone from rural ag to manufactured home parks, parcel 35848, approximately 10.94 acres. And the petitioner is requesting to do so for multi-residential use. Item I, also from the Planning Department, request to set a public hearing for August 3, case number 2113. And this would be to rezone from residential to general business for the purpose of auto sales. Again, also conditional. Parcel number is 44797, and that's about a quarter of an acre. Item J, our next public hearing, again, August 3. And this will be case 21-15. The petitioner here is actually asking for a text amendment to our UDO specific to Section 12-134. And the section of the UDO governs watershed development. And the ask is to make a few technical revisions, all included in your packet, specifically to the surface area that can be built on these watershed areas to be more similar to surrounding counties and to be more friendly to development. Item K, from the Planning Department, is our final request to set a public hearing for this evening, also for August 3, 21-16. This would be to rezone from general business to residential. Parcel number is 24702. And that's about 61.5 acre tract out next to the Deerbrook subdivision. Item L for consideration this evening is from Social Services. This is a text amendment to the bylaws of the Social Service Advisory Board. Several technical changes there. The most material for tonight's is the addition of a temporary seat to expire June 30, 2023. And at that time, that seat, at the time of that seat being vacant, it would no longer be an option for the board to fill. And finally, for consideration, item M is from our Legal Department. And this is a mutual aid agreement with the city of Shelby. We're specifically authorized via Statute 168-461 to have contractual agreements with other units of local government. This mutual aid agreement would authorize the county manager to enter into a such contract with the city of Shelby, specific for building inspections. I would point out to the board that any cost incurred by either organization would be fully reimbursed at the level of cost. So there should be no physical impact. Obviously, as you can see with all the land use, public hearings that are coming up, construction and building inspections are pretty busy at this point. So just trying to make sure we have as many things in order as we possibly can before we were to need additional aid. Or same direction for the city. So I think it's a very mutually beneficial opportunity. And Commissioner Bridges, that completes a fairly lengthy consent. I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Epley. Commissioners, do you have any discussion or questions for Mr. Epley?
Moving to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Sec.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to our regular agenda now. And I am going to call on Andrew Schrag, Regional Director of the Community Operations with Partners Behavioral Health, who will present us with some amended bylaws.
Thank you, Chairman Bridges and Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to go before you. As you know, Partners is growing with Cabarrus Union and Stanley County wishing to join us in September. And then Forsyth has requested to join us in January per the approval of Secretary Cohen. With this growth, Partners is requesting to add one new board member or board seat for each of the additional new counties joining us in order to ensure each county has representation with a commissioner or appointee to serve as a voting member. In order to do so, per an outdated General Statute 122(c) that we still are beholden to, we must request a statutory exception to add additional seats beyond our current 21-member board. And this requires two steps. First is to go before our current counties and commissions and to ask for a joint approval. And then second, the DHHS secretary, Secretary Cohen, agrees to the additional seats. In short, we're just trying to add one seat per each new county so that they have the same representation that we all have in our current counties. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Just a comment. I think with Partners and what they do for our counties, it's a good thing that we have a seat there. And I feel like that if I wasn't on that seat here, one of us need to be. But if we weren't, we would be in the dark about everything that goes on there. So I think adding a new seat for each new county is advantageous.
So we need a motion and a second. We need to vote on that if we're going.
I'll make a motion. Do we amend that?
Okay. All in favor? Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to Doran Mill Conceptual Layout. And I'm going to ask Brian Epley to talk to us about that.
So thank you again, Commissioner Bridges, members of the board. The point of this evening's update is simply to provide a... I think we're at a decent stopping place to get additional guidance from the board. If you'll recall, we've been working on this project for some time. Most recently, the direction from the Board of Commissioners came from your January 2021 work session, where we again revisited three options that I'll run through again momentarily, just as a reminder. And the point of tonight is to say, from that point, where are we at today? And then which direction do we want to go moving forward? As a quick reminder, the county inherited this property back in 2012. Rough timeframe as a matter of tax foreclosure. From that point, there were several different strategies and several, actually, over a couple of year period, trying to better understand the best use of the property. It's about 75 acres, about 50 acres on the eastern side, about 25 acres roughly on the western side of Highway 226. We've stuck, we went, beginning in 2018, we're able to develop a strategy that demolished the old building, cleaned the property up. On a parallel track, we engaged with a firm called Coldgeness and Stone to do a highest and best use analysis, where we measured things like traffic flow and, you know, different intersections, what utilities were there, a variety of different infrastructure measurements that would give us some idea as to what would ultimately generate the most return on this public asset to our taxpayers. We've seen it as a very advantageous piece of property. And we've tried to be very calculated, as with many of the decisions that we're working through now, so that we would have a sustainable return over a long period of time for Cleveland County. Just a little bit of history, as you can go back all the way to the 1920s when Duran was one of the county's largest employers. And then fast forward to '01, when they were closed. 2018 is when we began cleaning that property up. And you can see the vast transition there from the two photos. The options that were developed in connection with our highest to best use study and presented to the board originally back in 2019 and then updated in 2021 was, number one, we think we can sell the property. One option is to put a for sale sign out there at a market rate and try to immediately put the property back on the private tax books and spur some type of development. There were pros and cons there that we worked through in detail at your work session back in January. Option two was to pursue some type of industrial. And I'm missing an "in" there. I apologize. We proved that twice and didn't catch it. But in industrial development, specifically on the eastern side, the concerns there were topography, utilities, the environmental Phase One, Phase Two geotech analysis that may be in the dirt. And then the third option was a perceived mixed-use option that both incorporated an investment into Cleveland County's housing stock as well as some flex space that may give us some diversity in our local economy. Over the last really 18 months, we ran through all those. And again, back in January, we presented pros and cons to the board. And ultimately, the direction that the Commissioners gave staff was to further pursue option two and better understand what a site development plan would look like. Is this even a feasible option? There were tremendous amount of challenges with both option one and three that made option two, I think, stand out as the best choice at that point. So between January and now, we've partnered with a civil engineering firm called Withers Ravenall, great firm across North Carolina. And they've, we've worked with them and our engineering staff to come up with this conceptual site design. The good news is, the site will sit well for a 100,000-square-foot, expandable to 200,000-square-foot industrial site. That pushes the building 150 feet off the road. If you remember, the existing building was just feet from the highway there. You may think because of the topography that there would be massive retaining walls and significant grading, but we were able to balance the site on-site with on-site dirt, only about 80,000 cubic yards of material. And it only put the building at about eight feet below road grade with no retaining walls. So I felt pretty good about that. To this point, we have completed the environmental Phase One and Phase Two. There's still some environmental engineering that needs to take place. But you can see we have egress roads coming in. We have raw material laydown space. Generally, the property did lay better than, and more, really more advantageous than what I had originally, or our team had originally projected. The point of putting this in front of the board this evening is, again, just to give you the update of, this is where we are in the project. This is where we've been able to land over the last four and a half months. I would point out, and Commissioner Hutchins and I have talked about this, as he's the economic development liaison at this point, about 90% of our RFIs, which are requests for information coming in from the commercial site location consultants and all the folks that are looking to either expand or relocate, are still looking for that 100,000 to 200,000 square foot facility. So that's why we pinpointed that area. We are starting to see some diversity there, but predominantly, the market is being significantly weighted still towards that 100,000 to 200,000 square foot building. If we, if the board is comfortable with the site plan that we're proposing and generally the layout here, we still have a few things that we would need to do and report back. We need to do some geotech engineering to make sure we don't have rock problems, specifically underneath where the old building was. When we did the environmental Phase One and Phase Two, the old building was still there. So we've tested the dirt, excuse me, but there's still some more robust testing that we would want to do. And then we also would want to give Withers a notice to proceed to give us a schematic-level site grading plan with estimated impact cost. So they've told us that they think that we can balance the site and have pad ready with about 75,000 to 80,000 cubic yards of earth being moved. But we need to know from where to where, actually get, you know, layers and a more schematic level, and then also get some estimate of impacted cost. And then we would come back to the board and report at that time on next steps. Generally, what I'm, again, hoping to accomplish this evening is an update on where we are and a level of comfort from the Commissioners that this is the path that we want to continue to pursue. That's a very short presentation, Commissioner Bridges, but happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Commissioner, have you questions or comments? No actions required, but I think you'd just like to have our ideas about...
Yes, sir.
Just to be another project, Shelby partnered with us on the Shelby Building too, so...
Yes, sir. That's right. And just for clarity's sake, the little bit of money we've spent thus far in engineering, they've split that all with us 50/52.
I'm like what you said, it's amazing that they could balance that field. I envisioned having a whole bunch in there.
So I think, I think we all think it's a good idea, and so far, our endeavors in this area have been successful, and we've brought in some business and some jobs, and I think we're on the right path. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to board appointments, and for that, I'm going to ask the clerk.
Good evening, board. We have several boards up that will need some appointments this evening. First off is our Cleveland County Child Fatality Prevention Team. You have the list of applicants in front of you. At this time, you'll need to appoint five people to serve a three-year term set to expire June 30, 2024. These seats have specific requirements. This board is one of those. All of these applicants have been vetted and reviewed and meet the requirements for this team.
Okay, do all five at once?
You can, yes.
I would like to propose Katie Baker, Lori Whitstone, Peter Bagley, Deshaie Lawton, and Jessica Crawford.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. So all in favor? Thank you.
Next is the Cleveland County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. At this time, you will need to appoint three people for a three-year term set to expire June 30, 2024.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Kathy Robinson, Bill Withers, and Roy Bowman.
All right, all in favor? Thank you very much.
Next is the Social Services Advisory Board. As County Manager Brian Epley mentioned earlier, this will be for a two-year term, expecting to expire June 30, 2023, and it will be only for a one-time seat.
I nominate that you will serve in that position.
All in favor? Thank you.
The Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Board. At this time, you'll need to appoint five citizens for a three-year term set to expire June 30, 2024. You will also need to appoint the county finance director and authorize him to have a designate to also serve on this board.
So if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, let's split those up. So I'll make the motion to appoint Lucas, our finance director, and give him the authority to appoint a delegate if necessary.
Okay.
Second.
Second. All in favor? All right, and then we need five more.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll make a motion that we appoint Nancy Abish Khan, and I think I said that somewhere close.
A base gong, I think.
Frieda Polly, Anzi Horn, Marilyn Smith, and Tammy Phillips.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you very much.
Next is the Shooting Range Advisory Board. At this time, you'll need to appoint six people for a three-year term set to expire June 30, 2024.
So Mr. Chair, I will nominate, is it Jim Quellen? Is that right?
Quinlan.
Quinlan?
Mm-hmm.
Chip Kemp, Jason Falls, Stephen Hanson, Rob Bowman, and Betsy Orange.
Second.
All right, and all in favor? Thank you very much.
Last, the last two are for the City of Shelby. City of Shelby Board of Adjustment ETJ. You will need to appoint two people to serve a three-year term set to expire June 30, 2024. These two people do meet the requirements and do live in the ETJ.
So for the Board of Adjustment, I'll appoint Roger Holland and Noel McCallister.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Thank you. And the Planning Board.
And yes, sir. The last one is the City of Shelby Planning Board ETJ. You'll need to appoint two people for a three-year term set to expire June 30, 2024. Again, these seats have special requirements, have been vetted by staff, and do live in the ETJ and meet the requirements.
I would like to suggest Emmanuel Hunt Jr. and Bob Cadman.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, that concludes our board appointments.
Thank you. Okay, that gets us down to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Gordon, do you have anything you'd like to report to us tonight?
No, I don't think I have anything.
The biggest thing is I'm really proud to be part of celebrations, to help celebrate the independence of our country, and I think that's a great time of the year for us to go through, and hopefully, it looks like everybody here came through it safe. I did hear of a few accidents around, but glad everybody made it through.
Now, we'd already announced the expansion of the gun range and so forth, and I think with the appointment of these six new members, it's going to help and move it along, especially when it comes down to doing the archery. And I've had quite a few calls about the archery already, and hopefully that we can pick up a couple of Boy Scouts that want to be Eagle Scouts to do bridge. If not, we're already looking at making it happen without them, that we already got volunteers that will come out and help on it. Other than that, have a great Fourth of July.
I believe it's your birthday as well, right? Happy birthday.
Yeah, a big one. I've also heard that this weekend they had a lot of attendance out there.
Yes, they did. I think in talking to Sandra on Saturday, by lunchtime, they've had as many as probably almost a month, you know, for Saturday's attendance, so.
Was any of that related to the new ski range?
Quite a lot related to the new expansion.
And I don't have anything.
All right, well, appreciate everybody being here tonight. We'll mention the Catawba Resort has had 15,000 visitors so far, and I know that's going to make some changes in our county and give us some opportunities. The next meeting of Cleveland County Board of Commissioners will be held on Tuesday, July 15, 2021, at 6:00 PM in the Commissioners' Chambers. I didn't ask the staff if you had anything in under.
That's a Thursday.
That's a Thursday. That's right. So it's Thursday, July 15. So I'd ask for a motion to recess, to reconvene.
Sub move.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. We're returned. Thank you.